Good evening and welcome to this, the March 24th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos. Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Branning.
Here.
Mayor Marshon.
Here. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Sorry, apologize for the late start there. A lot of stuff to talk about. Was there any action taken in closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I'm your city attorney, Jason Alonkala. No, the city council did not take any reportable actions in closed session. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to proclamations and presentations, we have a proclamation declaring March 2025 as March for Meals, Pound Save Lunch Month. I will present this to Kerry Oldus, Meals on Wheels manager, who I saw last week as we were out delivering meals. So, March for Meals, Pound Save Lunch Month, March 2025. Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon amended the Older Americans Act of 1965, establishing a national nutrition program for seniors 60 and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels America established the Pound End the Wait Campaign to recognize this historic month, the importance of the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program, both congregate and home-delivered, and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas in partnership with Stanford Healthcare Tri-Valley, the Spectrum Community Services Meals on Wheels Program in Livermore has served the community admirably for over 30 years. Last year, Spectrum Community Services delivered over 35,400 nutritious meals to more than 240 homebound seniors throughout Livermore, allowing those seniors to remain residing in their homes with age and age with dignity. And whereas approximately 45 dedicated volunteers for Spectrum Community Services Meals on Wheels Program spend over 4,480 hours each year in Livermore. These volunteers are the backbone of the program, delivering nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities and providing caring, concern, and attention to their welfare. And whereas the Spectrum Community Services Meals on Wheels Program helps seniors maintain health and independence, preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and premature institutionalization, and serves as a powerful socialization opportunity for many Livermore seniors, combating the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness. Now therefore, the city council, the city of Livermore, proclaims March 2025 as the 23rd Annual March for Wheels Month and urges residents to volunteer, donate, and honor the Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Furthermore, the city council thanks staff and volunteers with Spectrum Community Services in their efforts to combat senior hunger and isolation in Livermore and in the Tri-Valley community. This, I'll present this to Kerry.
Mayor and the city council for proclaiming March, March for Meals. Meals on Wheels of America has added the End the Wait, and the End the Wait is the End the Wait for financial assistance to make the programs work, End the Wait for those of our agencies across the nation that have had to implement wait lists. We are very fortunate here in the Tri-Valley that we do not have a waitlist, and we're serving every client that reaches out to us. In the proclamation, it said 35,412 meals in Livermore. Throughout the Tri-Valley, we served 73,461 meals to 550 homebound seniors. And as each of the folks up there that went along and ride along realized that it's not just the meal, it's the wellness check. It's making sure they are okay. It's making sure that someone sees them, that they are not forgotten. Many of the families that rely on us to serve their family members aren't living here. So when a senior is expected to get a lunch, my staff does not leave until we can account for every person that was going to get a lunch. That means that we are giving that protection to the families, that someone is checking in, someone is seeing them, someone is speaking with them. More than 70% of our seniors live alone. The average age of our seniors is 78. And most of those seniors are living at low income or extremely low income. So without our program to provide the meals, at least that one meal, they would be suffering to be able to pay for their food. We do have the benefit of working with Stanford, which is an amazing program, which allows us to do medically tailored meals. So if a client needs a renal meal, or they need a soft, mechanically soft, even pure aid, we can do that because we have that direct partnership with the hospital. The other thing that Spectrum likes to talk about is that we knock five days a week. Many agencies across the nation have gone to one day, dropping off five meals one day. That means six days someone is not checking on them. For us, I struggle on holidays when I have to take Thursday, Friday for Thanksgiving, and then Saturday and Sunday, and I'm not seeing them for four days. And that first thing we do when we get back on that Monday is make sure everyone's accounted for, that we didn't misplace anyone over the weekend. But I want to thank you all for coming out. You need to come see me. You haven't come out. I know you just started, but you need to come see me. Everyone else came this week. We had, or last week, excuse me, we had seven representatives from Livermore come out. Eric Swallow was out today, and then Pleasanton and Dublin each had representatives come out and serve with us. Anyone, anyone in the audience, anyone in the community, if you would like to come out and see what it is that we do, you can reach out to me at M O W at spectrumcs.org, and I'll be happy to arrange that for you. Thank you again for your time and for the proclamation and your support.
And one more time, what was that email address?
It is M O W.
Like Meals on Wheels.
M O W at spectrumcs.org.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
It's a remarkable service. It truly is. Next, 3.2, the 2024 Climate Action Plan Progress Report, presented by Tricia Ponto. Do you have a fanfare?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is the 2024 Climate Action Plan Progress Report. So the city adopted an updated climate action plan back in November 2022, and it includes three goals: to prepare the community for climate impacts, to achieve carbon neutrality by 2045, and to establish Livermore as a climate action leader. And the climate action plan also recalls, also calls for annual reports to counsel each year to promote transparency to the public and keep us on track to meeting our goals. So the 2024 Progress Report covers implementation highlights from the calendar year 2024. It also includes the status of our priority actions in the climate action plan. And you won't see a greenhouse gas emissions inventory update in this report. We do those every other year, so you'll see it again in the 2025 Progress Report. So just some quick numbers of what we accomplished in 2024. Our building division has been busy issuing a lot of permits for solar panels, EV chargers, heat pumps. They've really worked to streamline the process, get applicants through the process quickly. We have several hundred housing, all-electric housing units under construction right now. Our fleet team has been purchasing electric and hybrid vehicles, transitioning to a clean vehicle fleet. And we're also using, all of our diesel fuel is renewable diesel, so we had over 26,800 gallons of renewable diesel used in our fleet operations this year. Our landscape team has also been very busy planting new trees, spreading organic mulch, converting turf grass to drought and native landscaping. We've continued to acquire open space to secure for conservation, implementing new buffered bike lanes and distributing a whole lot of recycled water. So now I'll touch on a couple of highlights of projects we accomplished in 2024. The first, I'm sure you've seen the solar EV chargers that are here at Civic Center. We have one behind City Hall and the other in front of the Civic Center Library. These were largely paid for by a U.S. Department of Energy rebate, and we were the first city that was awarded under that program. So we had some officials from the Department of Energy came out and did a ribbon-cutting event with us this past year. Those have been in place for about a year now. We've continued to work on other EV charging infrastructure projects for our fleet. We were selected last year to receive a grant from the California Energy Commission to install charging at five of our facilities. We expect that grant will be officially approved in May by the Energy Commission, and then we'll be hitting the ground running on installing a lot of charging of infrastructure at our facilities. Next up, we have Luna, the NASA Moon Tree. So we were gifted by Quest Science a sequoia sapling tree that had traveled around the moon in 2022 on the Artemis One mission. And so we had a naming contest for the tree. We had local students submit name ideas, and we had the community vote on a name. So her name is Luna, and she was planted behind the Civic Center Library. And we'll continue this year to work with Quest and our staff at the library to plan programming around environmental stewardship and scientific exploration with Luna. So more to come on that. City Hall Carbon Garden, we partnered with some researchers from the Lawrence Livermore National Lab. We converted turf grass between City Hall and the police department into a carbon garden that features native California grasses that researchers at the lab are studying for their abilities to sequester carbon. So we're continuing efforts like this this year as well in our city projects and development projects and promoting native species, pollinators, edible food plants. And we have a team of students at Granada High School who are also implementing a carbon garden on their campus, so a lot more to come on native drought-tolerant landscaping. And last but not least, heat mapping. We've been working with students, local high school students and Quest Science on a heat mapping project. These students have placed stationary and mobile temperature sensors around the city to take, to create urban heat island maps for the entire city. This photo here on the bottom left is their different, the different mobile temperature sensors. This one gets attached to vehicles. The one on the left is a new one that will be attached to bikes, so we'll be going around on bike lanes, trails, other areas that aren't accessible by a vehicle, continuing to do more, taking more measurements for us, and then we'll be combining this with other city data we have on tree canopy coverage or socioeconomic data, and this will help us target urban cooling strategies and projects around the city. So more to come this year on that as well. And so that and a lot more are included in the progress report. It's available on the website, livermoreca.gov/cap. And we also, in 2024, launched a new Instagram account that will provide the latest and greatest in all things sustainability and climate action in Livermore, so we encourage folks to check that out as well. So that concludes staff's presentation. We're available for questions.
Any questions? Vice Mayor Branning?
Just a quick comment. I want to just commend your team. The climate action plan since its inception and the updates have always been incredibly readable, and sometimes government documents are a little dense, and I think Livermore does a good job overall. And I think the climate action plan has always been kind of exemplary of good design, good accessibility, transparency. So I just want to really give a shout out and kudos for your work in making it a document for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Customer Wong?
I echo that. Some of the most exciting work that I've seen is in this committee. In our agenda packet, there was, I believe it was a chart of 35 priority actions and their updates on where we are on them. Is there, are they on track to be completed by the end of the five years?
Yes, I believe there's only one priority action that's currently on hold, but the rest are still on track.
And that's the Ava. And can you say a little bit about why that's on hold?
Yeah, when we updated the climate action plan, that was one of the main priority actions. And then after adopting the climate action plan, there were a lot of changes and increases in energy costs and energy bills. And that, adopting that action would be a slight increase in bills. Or the Renewable 100 is a little bit more than what customers in Livermore are paying right now. And so there was some hesitancy to move forward with that in the current landscape around energy costs and energy bills.
So is that on hold, that ends and we'll sort of monitor how things are going, or is there a trigger that will make that decision?
We'll continue to monitor.
Okay, okay.
Just to say that I've appreciated all the work, seeing you be the point of contact for this really puts a face to the many hundreds of actions that are here, and thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Great. Again, thank you, recognizing that, I think it's remarkable that we've acquired a couple hundred acres of open space, and that shows our commitment to not only the climate action plan, but also our permanent preservation of open space. So I think that that's a good highlight. And we have two mulch hubs now. We've got one at Asbury and one down at Crosswinds. That's great, because I know that one of the issues that we had was, the state was mandating us giving away mulch, and you can only use so much mulch. So I think it's great that we've got two hubs now, one at Crosswinds and one at Asbury. I know that I've used the one at Asbury many times. So go out there and avail yourselves of the free compost, folks. That's with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to open forum, if the city clerk would tell folks how they could, oh, was there any, oh, no, there is no public comment on proclamations. Thank you. How someone could participate in the open forum?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on an item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address a speaker's comments when a council member believes it's relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. For consent calendar items, one comment may be given for all items on the consent calendar. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the city council, a speaker will be allowed one comment for each item pulled for discussion and a separate comment for the remaining calendar. To provide comment, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the city council chambers. Speakers will be announced in order received. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will be given once the lectern. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, do we have any speakers for the open forum?
Yes, sir, we do. We have two speakers. The first speaker is Greg Scott, followed by Alan Marling.
Good evening. I am Greg Scott, Councilman Barrientos. I, as you know, am one of your constituents in District Two. I need to commend you for your courageous lone dissenting Livermore City Council vote on the Garaventa Hills project last November. I testified on the Garaventa Hills project in public hearing before the Livermore City Council years ago, long before you were on the city council, Councilman Barrientos. That testimony is part of the public record. I brought up the fact that there was inadequate consideration of the risks evidenced by the hydrological record on the emergency access and emergency egress corridor of the Garaventa Hills project by an historic Category One atmospheric river. Major historic Category One atmospheric rivers are cyclic, occurring on an average around every 165 years. We are just about due for such an event. The last major historic Category One atmospheric river occurred from late 1861 into 1862, where it rained 10 feet in most of Northern California in the 43 days from Christmas 1861 into early February 1862. In today's dollars, there was a billion dollars in damages. The new capitol in Sacramento was flooded and had to be moved temporarily to Venetia. Robert Livermore Jr. witnessed the event and knew where and where not to build his house. We now heed no such wisdom. Councilman Barrientos, I understand there are Fair Political Practices Commission, FPPC complaints for you for voting on the Garaventa Hills project because of the location of your residence and proximity to the Garaventa Hills project and the assertion that you may unfairly gain financially from your vote. These are specious, fatuous, and ludicrous complaints. Councilman Barrientos, please be strong and fight these complaints. What can be done is to take Garaventa Hills project traffic plan and the Garaventa Hills project economic analysis projections and feed them into OpenAI's chat GPT version 4.01, or better yet, for version 4.03, and correlate and cross-tabulate this data. I say these versions because the large language models therein have the ability to reason. This technology, Councilman Barrientos, allows you to eviscerate the specious, fatuous, and ludicrous FPPC complaints against you, and you can thereby eat them for breakfast. Now, I can tell you in the bittersweet, tell you the bittersweet, Councilman Barrientos and everyone else, the probability of your residence, Councilman Barrientos, having the evaluation it has today without decline in 12 to 18 months is very low. You do not have to take my word for it. Ask yourselves why Warren Buffett, the oracle of Omaha, has moved $300 billion into cash. He has unnerved Wall Street by this. Mr. Buffett wants to sell his Berkshire Hathaway Home Services business. Why? Because Mr. Buffett knows that home residences are going to decline in value in the not-too-distant future. In fact, by the information Mr. Buffett has, home residents' values are going to decline considerably. It is evident that Mr. Buffett hasn't done too badly in the last 70 years with the information he has obtained. Councilman Barrientos, please be strong and fight these specious, fatuous, and ludicrous FPPC complaints. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Marling.
Mayor and council, the Planning Commission recently reviewed a redevelopment of the Town Center Shopping Plaza, which is the big parking lot near the library that remains mostly empty. For similar economic reasons, strip malls have shuttered. Though its disuse depresses me, nearby residents still express concerns about building housing there. Some of them worried about asbestos, a legitimate fear, but proper precautions will be taken. Others were worried about creating a food desert. The trouble is, the development doesn't need to include commercial space or have a height requirement, as I understand it, because the city fell briefly out of compliance with its housing element. When we can't plan our own housing well, housing is forced upon us any which way, so let's do it right. Other complaints that day ranged from blocking views and sunlight to dust and fumes from construction. In other words, NIMBYism, not in my backyard. I find it sad that people would prefer an asphalt wasteland than a change into something necessary, housing. Another concern was parking and traffic congestion, two things that will continue to worsen unless Livermore is able to plan and build far-sighted, walkable communities. NIMBYism is often ugly, selfish, and shortsighted. And it's hamstrung Livermore's downtown for years. Some of the richest locals, Joan Sepulveda, owner of the Independent, and Jean King, fund lawsuits to paralyze Eden Housing downtown, which would be a walkable, far-sighted community that's affordable. And what about the hotel that our wine industry needs? Are they blocking that too? Now, these plutocrats claim they're not opposed to affordable housing if it's somewhere else. They don't mind the pores, I guess, as long as the lower classes remain out of sight. This is particularly troubling, as affordable housing disproportionately benefits people of color. But even if Joan Sepulveda and Jean King's motivations aren't racist, they certainly aren't good. It could be as simple as they don't want the dust and exhaust from construction near their beloved Bankhead Theater as they waltz in once a week or so to hobnob. They would rather force Livermore out of housing compliance than they themselves suffer a minor inconvenience. They would rather die first and sentence Livermore to a future of shoddy development and congestion. What a legacy.
That concludes open forum.
Okay, I'm going to close the open forum. Moving on to the consent calendar, is there anybody which is to pull any item for consent?
I'm going to look at the audience really quickly, and I don't actually have anything to pull on item 5.8, but if anyone there wanted to make comments on it, I would be willing to.
We're going to, we're going to have public.
We'll have them.
Yeah, we'll have public comment.
Just making sure they have an opportunity.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
Then I have some questions on 5.6, but not.
How about you ask your question on 5.6?
Okay. So 5.6 is on the police military equipment, so I'll see if the city manager can answer them. Otherwise, we could invite the chief up. So I have two questions. First one is, when we're doing the report, if it's possible in the inventory of items to also put the usage data in there, you know, when was it used or how was it used? I don't know if the inventory side is prescribed by the state how it's laid out or not, but if it isn't, I just think having the usage data in there would be helpful to kind of cross-reference. So do you?
Through the mayor, this is your city manager, Mariana Birch. We can certainly take this into account. I would imagine that if there is a mandatory requirement, we can always go above and beyond and see if we could amend the next year's report with additional details.
Yeah, and just for the audience, the data is in there in the report. It's in a separate area. And so just for ease of cross-referencing, I think that would be helpful for me personally, looking at the information. And then one of the programs that's, you know, a rather large program is the drone program. So I would like to ask, if possible, for our council briefing on just how it's been used. And I leave it to the discretion of the city manager and the police chief, if that's a, you know, private briefings for the council members who would like one or a public hearing.
Through the mayor, Vice Mayor Branning noted, and we will follow up. Thank you.
Okay, and that's my only comments on that. Right. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions on that item as well. So last year, I went to attend the public presentation of this report, and I was very impressed that Chief Young and Captain Reynolds were there, standing in an empty room, though. I was the only person who came. And so I have a question of if that's typical of attendance at the public presentation of this. And if so, do we think that's due to lack of interest or not enough publicity?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Wong, I'll take this as well. This is your city manager, Mariana Birch, and we can certainly see if the police chief has anything to add. We have advertised public meetings. We've had three of them for three years. We use our typical means of advertising from the website to a newsletter, to social media, to postings and places where we post agendas. And unfortunately, these meetings are not well-attended, which is unfortunately no different from town halls that we have occasionally. They're just not well-attended, which hopefully is a sign that we communicate well. In general, we have had only a handful of participants in the last three years. I believe we went from something like two people to four to three people this year.
I think what it is, it's a matter of trust. The community honestly trusts what our police and fire departments are doing and that we, that we've earned that trust, and that our number one priority on our budget is public safety. And I think that people realize that this is not going to be abused, that we're going to use it. And there were some issues in the paper recently where there are people that were lost, and we were able to find them using the drone technologies, and we were able to capture some of the bad guys using drone technology. So we're absolutely using this the way it's supposed to be used.
Just as a quick comment on that also, I went to the very first one of these, and it was actually well-attended. So I think, I believe Chief Young was there. Yeah, you were there. So if you remember, I want to say it was at the library. I forget. It was the very first time we did it, I remember. There was a good number of people showed up, and then I think since then, the novelty possibly has changed, and there haven't been as many.
Okay, do we have any speakers for the consent calendar?
Wait, I haven't finished. Sorry.
It'll come back.
Chief Young's also up here at the podium.
Oh, okay. It'll come back.
I was just going to say that the first year that the military equipment report was due, it was new to everyone. And so I think throughout the state, we saw more attendance. And so I think throughout the state, we saw more attendance in the beginning. But then, once people saw kind of what the content was, uh, it really has dissipated, uh, since then. And, um, and so we, we put the information out so it's available and I think a lot of people can see it. Um, and don't need to come down because there's not many questions, but, uh, we definitely advertise it. We hope to have a good attendance, but, uh, um, we just haven't seen that in the last couple of years.
Yeah, and I, I would think since I've received the explanation of the different items that once people understand what it's useful for, you don't need to come back every year and hear that explanation. I just wanted to make sure it's been promoted. It sounds like it is through our regular channels, so.
Well, I think people wonder what, you know, what the definition of military equipment is, you know?
Yes.
We don't have cruise missiles, you know, uh, we don't have, uh, uh, have, uh, rocket launchers, you know, so it's, it's, we want to have at least as good equipment as the bad guys do. So, uh, uh, I think that was, there was a lot of curiosity there, but what is, is a piece of military equipment?
That's right, mayor. I think, you know, originally people thought, wow, what, what kind of military equipment do our local police have? And when they saw what the definition was, it wasn't all that exciting.
Yes, that one quick additional question while they're up here. Uh, can you talk a little bit about how you keep, uh, people trained on all of this equipment? I assume not everyone's trained on everything. How do you, and stay on top of the training?
Well, anyone who's authorized to use the equipment has been trained on it. And so there's a schedule depending on the type of equipment that they're using as far as how often they need to train and what the training curriculum is. And we have a training manager at the police department that takes all of that into account and makes sure that every year we have the allotted time for everyone who's, uh, allowed to use the equipment. So they have the, uh, minimum requirements and most times we exceed the minimum requirements.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
One quick comment. I did go expecting to see something, but alas, I did not see RoboCop there. So, no, it's just basic equipment and, uh, I appreciated tour and I saw our jails, which are used for storage now, right?
Love that Vertran system though, the virtual training. That's, that's an awesome, that's an awesome piece of equipment. Okay, public comments for, uh, consent calendar.
No public comments been received.
No public comment?
No speaker.
Five point eight? Okay, uh, thank you for the, so I'll make a comment on five point eight. Thank you for the tremendous work. Uh, it was six years, uh, to get the financing, uh, on, uh, five point eight. That's the, uh, um, uh, the, uh, uh, housing at, uh, uh, the City Hall campus, the, uh, Interfaith Housing. Uh, this is the ground lease, which gives you an idea just how much effort and work goes into this. Uh, so I want to commend the, uh, uh, persistence of folks that worked on this. And this is going to be a, a true benefit to our community because, uh, we look upon our seniors as a tremendous resource uh, for this community and the fact that they can, uh, stay here, uh, and, uh, uh, continue to be that resource. And at the same time, uh, you know, perhaps they can free up their housing and move into the senior housing. So, uh, uh, as, as we heard, many folks are living in their homes that are, uh, really at or below poverty level. Uh, they're, uh, property-rich but cash-poor. So, uh, I think this is going to be a great opportunity here for our community and thank you for the great work that you've done on this. Uh, so with that, I'm going to, uh, close the public comment period on the consent calendar. Um, any comments or any, uh, any further questions?
Just one comment on other pieces where, uh, I just wanted to point out that some of the actions we're taking tonight are part of our climate action plan on this consent calendar.
Right.
So, uh, it all wraps back around.
All right, uh, with that, I'd entertain a motion. Okay, moved by Councilmember Barrientos.
Seconded.
Seconded by, uh, Councilmember, uh, Dunbar. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions have passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to, uh, public hearing, uh, considering, oh, yeah, thank you. Um, moving on to six point one, this is, uh, uh, hearing to consider the twenty twenty-four Housing Element, uh, Annual Progress Report. Uh, somebody already spoke to that earlier tonight, uh, but on to our housing element.
Honorable Mayor Marshand and members of the city council, this is once again your city manager, Mariana Birch. Item six point one is going to be presented by Shannon Pagan, Assistant Planner in the Community Development Department with the assistance of Stephen Riley, our planning manager. Thank you, Mr. New.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor Marshand and members of the city council. Uh, tonight I will be presenting an overview of the twenty twenty-four Housing Element Annual Progress Report for informational purposes and acceptance. Livermore's Housing Element is a state-mandated document that lives within the city's general plan. It specifies how the city plans to accommodate current and future housing needs for people of all income levels in Livermore. This annual progress report tracks the city's progress in meeting the goals, objectives, and programs of the housing element. The preparation and filing of this report is not only required by state law for housing element compliance, but also maintains the city's eligibility for various federal funding and grant programs. It's due to the state by April first, so if the report is accepted this evening, staff will submit to the state by the deadline. The state's reporting requirements have increased considerably over the last several years and are continuing to expand to address ongoing changes to state housing legislation. Uh, the report compiles an impressive amount of housing data, tracking residential development from project application to occupancy, uh, housing program implementation status, as well as numerous other reporting requirements. It serves as a comprehensive tool to assess how the city is addressing its housing challenges and meeting state-mandated goals, uh, particularly the regional housing needs allocation or the RENA. For just a quick background, um, the RENA is a process where the state determines the projected housing need for each region based on different factors like population growth, housing conditions, and economic trends. And once the state has determined the projected need or number of units, each region's, uh, council of governments then allocates housing targets by income level to each jurisdiction or city. The city is then required to demonstrate the ability to accommodate the sign, the assigned number of units. Um, the cities are, are not responsible or required to construct housing to meet the RENA. Rather, uh, the city is required to maintain sufficient land and adequate housing sites through zoning and programs in the housing element to meet the RENA. And this process happens every eight years, referred to as arena cycle, and typically coincides with the state-mandated housing element updates. We are currently in, uh, in the sixth cycle RENA, which spans an eight-year period from twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. Uh, Livermore has a target of accommodating four thousand five hundred and seventy new units by the end of the cycle in twenty thirty-one. The data from the annual progress report provides the actual progress towards meeting these assigned targets. And this is done through monitoring building permit activity as new housing units count towards the city's RENA at the time that building permits are issued. So twenty twenty-four was the second year of the current RENA cycle. Um, we can see there was a significant increase in permitting activity when compared to recent years. Um, building permits were issued for three hundred and sixty-four new units across income levels, including units in the low and very low income categories. These, uh, lower-income units are very challenging to build as they almost always require substantial subsidies, uh, either through a developer or public contributions. Um, making progress towards RENA targets in these categories much slower. And this is consistent with and true for other jurisdictions in the region. However, um, staff doesn't anticipate, uh, similar or higher level of permit activity over the next several years, uh, driven by the approval and anticipated construction of several larger-scale residential projects, um, some of which we will highlight in some upcoming slides. Uh, in conjunction with meeting, uh, the RENA targets, uh, the housing element includes a variety of additional programs and objectives to meet the city's housing needs. Uh, many of the programs are and will continue to be implemented on an ongoing basis. Um, of note, in twenty twenty-four, significant progress was made on the comprehensive general plan update as well as the development code update, um, both which incorporate changes to further facilitate development uh, for a variety of housing types, densities, and income levels. The city continues to implement a variety of housing assistance programs, funding local nonprofits and homelessness programs. And staff also continues to implement our inclusionary ordinance for new residential development applications. And as we saw on the last slide, we are slowly starting to contribute to those arena targets in the affordable categories and anticipate further progress as, uh, approved projects come to fruition. These next few slides are intended to highlight some of the current and known, uh, future residential projects in the city. Um, it's not meant to be a comprehensive list of all the residential units permitted or approved, but rather it's an overview to demonstrate where we're headed and, um, and, uh, the level of residential activity occurring and anticipated apart from, um, the ADUs and fairly limited number of individual, single-family homes, um, home projects that may be permitted in a given year. Um, in twenty twenty-four, the vast majority of the permitted activity was concentrated in the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan as well as the Arroyo Vista Neighborhood Plan. Um, building permits were issued for all units in the Serenity Project in the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan, um, including sixty affordable units in, in the low, uh, very low and moderate income categories. Uh, building permits were also issued for some of the units in the Cava and Arroyo Vista projects. And we have and will continue to see, uh, more building permits issued for those two projects in twenty twenty-five. Um, in addition to the permitted projects just highlighted, uh, several other significant residential projects were approved in twenty twenty-four. Uh, three of those were in the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan area as well, um, as well as the Garaventa Hills project. Um, collectively, these approved projects will provide over fifteen hundred units with four hundred of those being, um, of low and moderate income affordability. Um, staff anticipates these projects will be issued building permits over the next couple of years, um, and they will be reflected in our RENA, um, progress at that time. Just a few other anticipated residential projects we know of, um, for twenty twenty-five and beyond, um, include two more in the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan as well as one right across, um, from City Hall here in the Old Nob Hill Center. Uh, we've got the Triad East or what they're calling Amarone. Um, and that was approved, uh, back in twenty twenty-three and, uh, building permits, we've start to see those being issued early twenty twenty-five. Um, we've got Cornerstone, which was approved in early twenty twenty-five this year. Um, that project exceeds the number of affordable units required by the inclusionary ordinance and also includes units in the low, very low, and also extremely low, uh, income categories. And also Pacific and Livermore right here across the street, which will also provide low-income units. And lastly, um, two projects to highlight the senior housing and housing with special services. We just, um, heard about the Pacific Avenue Senior just a few moments ago. It's on the agenda tonight. And that one will provide a hundred and forty low-income, very low and low-income senior housing. And those will be reflected in the RENA also at the time of building permit issuance. And lastly, we have the assisted living at the well. Um, this project will provide assisted living and memory care suites, consistent with the housing element programs that encourage production of housing, uh, with special services. Um, with that, the twenty twenty-four Annual Progress Report shows the city continues to make progress in implementing programs of the housing element and contributing to our state-mandated housing goals. Uh, staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution accepting the twenty twenty-four Housing Element Annual Progress Report. Um, that concludes our presentation this evening and staff is available for questions.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir, no public comments been received.
Oh, we, we, the last minute, we've got a public comment.
Yes, sir, we do. Uh, Trish Monroe. Ms. Monroe, if you'll just give me one second to get your name up on the board.
Good evening, Ms. Monroe. Good to see you again.
Good to see you, all of you. Uh, good evening, uh, mayor, city council members and, uh, always wonderful staff. Um, I just wanted to compliment this report. This was really exciting to see. I'm particularly struck, though, by the how much in lieu housing was provided. Um, I know that there is often, I, I have heard comments from others talking about how we don't always get, it, it should all be in lieu. And I, I think that this is a really good example of how we are really fulfilling. We as a city are fulfilling our duty to provide housing that is within the development while still making it possible to have special housing for those, you know, for, for example, senior housing. Um, so I just, I wanted to make sure that was called out. Thank you very much for all your work. I look forward to seeing these come to fruition.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Any questions or comments from the council? Vice Mayor?
Uh, of course, it's housing, so I have a few things to say. Uh, first of all, I want to thank staff for the report. Uh, I always find it a little entertaining when we're voting on something to say that we saw it, um, but I feel like this might be a safe vote for you. Uh, I do want to comment because they've updated. I don't know exactly when, but the new, uh, low, median, moderate income scales, uh, not too long ago, and it just struck me as I was looking at it because I think people often struggle with putting it in perspective. And so, since, uh, in my day job, I work with a lot of teachers. For a teacher to qualify, uh, teacher living alone, so one person in their household, a single teacher to modify, to qualify for moderate income, they could work in my district for fifteen years and still qualify as a moderate income household. So, we're not talking about people who just moved to the area, people who, you know, are just starting out. That's, you know, someone in their thirties who has been working consistently in a district who is not married, has no kids. If they have a partner, if they have kids, those numbers go up rapidly. Uh, but it really stood out to me, just with the amount I look at salary schedules these days also. So, I think, you know, a lot of times these conversations, when we talk about affordable housing, there's stigma attached around it. The low-income category would be new teachers living alone would be able to fit into the low income. So, these are professionals. When we get into even lower incomes, we're talking about service workers, people in our community. But the income requirements, the lowest income requirement, a single person living alone at extremely low income, thirty percent, is thirty-one thousand dollars. So we're not talking about someone who doesn't have an income. That is roughly the annual minimum wage. So, I really want to make sure to emphasize, first of all, when we're talking about income of the restricted properties, income restricted properties, it is still difficult to get in if you are working a regular job in this area. And when you talk about without those restrictions, it can be almost impossible. And so I appreciate very much the community that stepped up recently, um, particularly with projects like Cornerstone where they've gone above and beyond providing extremely low, very low, and low-income housing. Because without projects like that, there is absolutely no way that we would ever meet arena numbers for those levels. It is financially almost impossible to build housing at those levels to any scale. And so when we have a partner that comes in and is working to build more than we legally require. We should really commend them. And as we're working on these projects like the Isabel Neighborhood Plan, we are getting increased numbers of units at the lower ranges. And a lot of cities around us are building nearly zero in those categories. The added benefit of this as a fiscally responsible city. Is that the state is looking to no longer just look at your arena numbers when they're talking about penalties to assess on cities. They're looking at what you actually built. And so if we can't approve and construct projects that are going to allow housing at these lower income levels. We are facing fines and a loss of control. And these laws that the state are proposing are getting harder and harder for us to meet. And we don't have funding backing them to give us the opportunity to simply as a city say, we'll build it. The city doesn't have the funds to build housing. We can approve projects and work with developers to build it. And so I really want to commend all of the work that our city is doing to stay ahead of the laws that are coming up. Because the next five years before the end of the cycle, we are going to see harder requirements, stricter requirements than we've been seeing. And we're one of the only cities that I'm seeing that is really meeting our requirements and getting close at least. We're doing much more than almost any city in the region. And I know that for people listening in the audience, sometimes that kind of change can be difficult. But it's necessary. This is allowing our teachers, our service workers, our city employees. To live in our city. And so. I thank you. I thank you for the hard work. These projects have been difficult to get through and required countless hours on staff. Negotiating and working through the deals of them. They have been complex and difficult. So I thank you deeply for sticking it out, making them work. And getting us housing that will work for everyone. So, thank you.
Yes. Customer Dunbar.
Hi. Thank you for the work. Couple points and then, and then I'll something at the end. I just wanted to point out, not only are we working very hard to meet these numbers, but in our own report, we. Give the statistics of what percentage of them are actually infill. And a very high percentage of them are infill. And that is to our immense credit to protect our open spaces, which is a theme that is. Yes, you know, the change, the change is quite difficult. It is different than what has been there before. I live in a townhouse. This is the, the thing that allowed me to create a footing in here and meet my own dreams. And that's how I think about the personal connection that Vice Mayor Branning spoke about is. You know, the, the dollar value is really hard to see even on its face. But really what we're talking about to some degree is allowing people to get into that stable housing. And if they're a young person, really start their lives and get off the couch of their parents, you know. Which they often want to do but can't, can't afford to do. Or people that have been working for fifteen years already. And want something stable, want to be really rooted in the community in the long term. And that's, that's what this affordable housing allows for. I'm looking, looking very forward to looking at the numbers over the next few years. We've got a lot of projects coming. We've got a lot of variety in our projects coming, as was mentioned in the staff report. I would like to, as, as a public comment noted. Point out, in the next, maybe the next presentation, even though it's above and beyond, maybe what is required by the state, is putting a face to. Exactly where our in lieu fees are going because we are using them effectively here. I have every, I, I know that we are. I've seen the projects. And it's listed down in the, you know, sheets of facts, but putting it right out there may help. Because we tend to have these conversations every time a project comes up. Why are we allowing the in lieu fees? Well. To some degree, it may be required. To some degree, it might be the best outcome. And to some degree, we have projects in line that we know are going to be used to good effect. Thank you.
Certainly, thank you. Any other comments?
Okay. Mentions, I got some comments saying people are complaining about, oh, we're building more houses. That's all we need. And I got nasty. Yes, we do need the houses. I went through the whole population thing going on, gave him a little history. But yes, we do need more houses. We're way behind in housing stock in the country. And I think we're doing a great job. This, all of a sudden, everything is going pretty good right now. So I appreciate it and I understand. My, when I first got on here, I tried to, what is affordable housing? I couldn't afford any of those affordable housing units. As a teacher. And that's my concern too, wishing we can have more units for teachers that, especially starting teachers. And they don't start like a policeman. We start at fifty, sixty thousand dollars. It takes a while to get up to the top at a hundred thousand. Yes, we have summers off, but still, you know, some, a lot of teachers do end up going to work during the summer. I did a lot of summer school teaching and all that. Still didn't, I still wouldn't be able to afford a affordable housing unit right now at the salary that I had in those days. Anyway, I do appreciate what we're doing here and, you know, we just keep plugging away.
So when I attend events or meetings with mayors and council members from other cities. The big topic is always housing and how people are doing on their arena numbers. And especially building the lower income is so challenging for everyone. And so I just want to echo what Vice Mayor Branning said, that I really appreciate that how hard our staff works to make this happen. And then to get to the point that we are, I really appreciate that.
So some of you may know, I spend way too much time on Nextdoor. And I've seen Customer Beriantos on Nextdoor. We were commenting on some of the same things. But people were saying, oh, this rampant growth, you know, whatever happened to the, the, the two percent that was voted on years ago? And we're, we're like five percent growth. So I, so I did the math or the arithmetic. I went back to nineteen ninety. Nineteen ninety-five and going all the way through, you know, the thirty years. We have grown at just about one percent a year for the last thirty years. That's pretty remarkable when you consider the, we were the bottom of the recession, everything stopped. But we're about one percent a year for the last thirty years. But to Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor's point, the, we're growing smart. You know, we're not, it's, this isn't rampant unchecked growth. This is very precise, very strategic. Growth that we are allowing in this community so that, that it really welcomes everyone. We're not just attracting the rich folks. We're attracting the service workers as well. And that's why we have our, our in lieu program. And the in lieu fee is recognizing and our affordable housing fee is it recognizing as people come into this community, we're going to need service workers. We're going to need people to, to serve the folks that are living in this community. So we want a wide range of people. To be able to afford to live here. And I think that this really underscores the, the success that we have been able to achieve. In doing just that. So again, thank you to the staff, everybody for all the, the great work. Bless you. The great work that's, that's going on here. So with that, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Branning.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion on the motion? On favor, signature probably saying aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It passed unanimously. Thank you all very much. Thank you. So with that, we move on to item eight, committee reports, matters initiated. Start with Councilman Dunbar.
Only thing that wasn't on my report was the Holy Festival in Dublin that I attended this weekend. It was a very nice time.
That's the chalk throwing festival, right?
Yes, it is. I got my, I got all my motorcycle gear covered in, in chalk and I bet people were laughing at me on the, on the drive back, but.
That, that cloud of chalk that's going down the road, right? Okay, very good. Excellent. Thank you. Customer Wong.
I attended my first committee meeting for the Altamont Landfill Open Space Committee. And we didn't have any action items that time, but a lot of useful informational items, especially for me, since everything's new to me there. Over the weekend, Mayor Marshand and I attended, participated in the city of Livermore's litter pickup event. And there were probably thirty high school students there and it was great. I loved that event. In two hours, you can really get far. And it's interesting to see what gets thrown out. I always said the great majority is food and drink items, wrappers.
And straw wrappers, cigarette butts and straw wrappers.
I saw a suitcase full of water, but I didn't try to move that. And then we also both attended Sunday night, I believe, the Islamic Center of Livermore's Iftar. And that was very interesting, was brand new to me, a new experience. It was great. Thank you.
And for those that know, Iftar is the breaking of the fast for Ramadan. So the Muslims do not eat or drink from sunrise to sunset. And the Iftar is the breaking of that fast. It's a good event. Customer Beriantos.
Oops, there goes. I also attended, I didn't put it on my little thingy here. The Tri Valley purity foundation grants. And I was sitting there quietly watching. And then all of a sudden, this person was up to me and he goes, coach, what? And it was one of my wrestlers from a couple of years ago. He, his group got, you know, one of the grants and it was called Oakland Tribey. And I kept saying, what is that? You know, he goes, well, it's a mix of a tribe and we're all together as a tribe in Oakland. And they employ high school kids and they do a lot of community events and he's into that. And I'm not sure if you know my background, I taught kindergarten. He was a big tall kid. And he goes, hey, I'm teaching head start. So it's all, that's two wrestlers. One is bigger than him and he teaches kindergarten special ed in Oakland. And now this other young guy, he's with Head Start now. And he volunteers with his tribey. And they try to do a lot of community events to help kids and employ youth when they got the grant.
Very good. Excellent. Vice Mayor Branning.
All right. So it was a busy couple of weeks. It was nice. Work wasn't quite as busy, which is always good. So I got to attend more events. I want to highlight from Spectrum coming out, if you can, go on a ride along, volunteer. They're a great organization. It was a lot of fun going on the ride along. My work schedule accommodated it this year and I was very glad to be able to go. I do want to highlight a couple of other things. I was able to go to the Muslim Community Centers, Community Iftar with our friend. Vice Mayor Quadri speaking about the intersection of faith and service, public service, which was very interesting. And Livermore Downtown Inc., I was able to meet our new Downtown Inc. Executive Director. Who started up, I believe, last week. And so if you have a chance, you should be able to see her downtown. Go out, meet her, see her vision for the community. I do have One Matters Initiative for today. When I was looking through the documents with the general plan, there seemed to be an oversight on the Laughlin Road area. From the Planning Commission direction and the council direction on the previous update, we had asked for. The high density housing in that area to be moved to medium density. And in the last report, it was still listed as high density. So I'd ask staff to look into that and come back with a correction. And I think that's it on that one, that part. Thank you.
Okay, let's see with, just to highlight a couple of things, the Tri Valley Nonprofit Alliance had a mayor's summit at the bankhead. And it just underscored the remarkable cooperation and collaboration that we have between the, the five cities in the Tri Valley. So I think that was how we, we work with our nonprofits to continue to provide services to our community. There was also a reception for the Livermore Yozkaido Sister City Organization. We've got a group, this has been going on for over forty years. And every year we have a student exchange where students come from Yozkaido to Livermore. And in the fall, a group of students goes from Livermore to Yozkaido. So it's a wonderful program as your junior high school students. We had the. As the Councilmember Wong mentioned, the litter cleanup, over thirty people showed up. And we're out picking up litter and making the community a better place. I think that was. Very heartening and the enthusiasm that we had. And also the Youth in Government Day, that was. We had a number of young folks. This is a cooperation we do with the school district, park district. Rotary funds the lunch and we have a mock city council meeting. It's always a lot of, the kids have a lot of fun. Seeing how all this actually happens. And then they had an opportunity to job shadow a number of folks. Because what's really interesting is that they get a chance to see what types of jobs are available in public service. And in, in the city. So it's not just police and fire, but it's, it's public works. It's the city attorney's office. It's the public works. So all these different organizations that are agencies that come together to make this all happen. So that was, that was very, very heartening and the enthusiasm that they, that they had. One of the fun things, they had a penny for your thoughts program where they were given thirty pennies and then had to allocate their budget. And I don't think that anyone actually had the same fifty percent. Allocation to public safety that the city does. They all had funding for it, but nobody quite matched the level of the city. And then the, the real exciting part is when they have to take away six pennies. Nobody wants to do that, but this is what we actually did during the recession. So it was a great day. The, the kids were treated to lunch by the, by the Rotary. And. Here is probably one of the more difficult things. There was a young lady that had signed up for this, this program. And she was very active in the community. She was on the cheer team, the stunt team. She was very active in. Future Farmers of America. And she was very interested in this Youth in Government Day. And sadly, she passed away in her sleep and was not able to participate in the program. So what that tells us is no one is promised tomorrow. Hug your kids, be close to your family. And with that, I will. Adjourn the meeting in honor and memory of Macy Perez. So, thank you.